Turn your mics on, please.
Test.
All right. This calls the order of the Monday, April 28, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. First item of business is approval of the meeting minutes from the meeting held on March 31st, 2025. Is there a discussion or would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes as published for March 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Next item of business is item two, old business, there is none. Moving on, item three, new business. Item A, site plan review for 6136 Mission Road, Fairway, Kansas, as submitted by PJ Novak of Confluence. On behalf of the city of Fairway, property owner, request for shelter within pool complex. Basel, do you want to provide your staff report?
Yes, I'll let my report stand as submitted and I'm open to any questions. Just got a clarification from the attorney. Part of your review needs to comply with section 15, 235D. And it's those 19 criteria items. You can see that on the third report on page 12 if you want to familiarize your... But none of those items really apply since this job is exempt per section 15, 5. And I'm open to questions.
And I'll kind of clarify and expand on that. I'm Taylor Carrington Stinson. Section 15-5 does exempt the city and city facilities from provisions of the code. However, site plans are still subject to review by Planning Commission. And the criteria that Basel directed me to work at is the criteria for site plan approval. And happy to take any questions if there are any.
Basel, was there a survey or anything completed to locate the fence line and property line?
Yeah, the survey is the last page of the report. But then the applicant added it on SP 100, the location of the shelter. So the survey was done to certify the property lines.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, this was the... We talked about this one maybe last month or two months ago?
Yes, this is the same application. What you guys approve is the comprehensive... Does it meet the comprehensive plan? That was approved by you guys. So this is a site plan review.
Yeah, so I think the question at the time was related to the new fence line relative to the old fence line. Is that...
That's right. So with the survey done, with the new fence line, the fence is going to be recessed too. So it's not going to be put on the property line. It's still going to be recessed, but it's going to be pushed toward the property line.
How far?
Looks like it's about 18 feet.
Looks like 10, 10 feet maybe. Because the existing fence line actually has a curve to it. It's not a straight line. So there's still about six to seven feet from the property line to the new fence.
Basel, is there any kind of a marker? Are they going to recess the fence towards the park property? There's going to be about six feet between the fence and the property line?
Yeah, it's about six because if you see, again, SP 100, the distance from the shelter to the property line is 11.6 and then there's a six-foot concrete, so it's about five feet to six feet. So the trees are going to be planted outside the fence.
Okay, so the city will still maintain the six feet then?
That's correct, yes.
Any other questions for staff? Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on this? Would you like to come up and say your name and address for the record?
Hi there, my name is Kari Peca. I live at 6115 Alhambra Street. That is the house that is on the north end of the pool, at the end of the street. The only house affected by the movement of the current pool fence. And with the numbers you're giving now, my numbers aren't quite correct, but still, I need some real clarification on that, please. So I purposely bought this house because there was less traffic. There were old growth trees, quaint houses. It would be safe for my grandkids to be out front, whether they were being monitored or whether they escaped from the house. It's intimate and I figured it would be great for building community with my neighbors and it really has been. I've been very happy living here. When I bought the house, the real estate listing specifically included it has a perennial bed. My realistic assumption was that this bed was on my property. So I began tending it, adding plants, moving plants to provide beautiful privacy to my backyard. I also assumed that the pool fence was the property line with the preconceived thought and that is how I designed my new landscaping. So in February, I received a notification about a Planning Commission meeting regarding some changes to the pool. So I attended that last meeting and then last week Bryce and I were talking because he said that they had the site markings for the actual property line. He gave me a copy of the plans, which I still am struggling to interpret, but explained that the property line is actually about six feet from my fence. Presently, nothing has been marked, so I've been out there with my measuring tape trying to get my best interpretation of that. So presently, the fence line, the fence is about 25 feet from my fence with my measuring tape, which has provided a great buffer and privacy between me and the pool and the fence and the people. There are no markings on the line now, so like I said, these are just my measurements. If the fence is moved six feet from my fence, but now it's said that it's another six feet. So what I had calculated, what is the... From the actual fence line. So if the fence line is actually... If the property line, excuse me, is six feet from my fence, then that buffer is reduced by about 14 feet to only 11. 25 feet of buffer to only 11 feet. Essentially, this would put people in my backyard and in my living room. People often say, "It must be terrible living next to the pool." And I always say, "No, are you kidding? It's really great. There's this space between me and the pool. It's happy, they play great music, and I can have a really great time there easily with my family." But in my opinion, the movement of the fence, this great amount, is a significant reduction in the buffer between my house and the pool fencing and I would be grateful if some more of this buffer was retained. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on that? Okay, any discussion?
Well, I guess I'd be curious to know, maybe if PJ could tell us on this plan where the existing fence is. I'm not understanding that.
When you say existing fence, do you mean the existing pool fence or the existing homeowner's fence?
The existing homeowner's fence. Or either one or both.
I'm trying to figure out both on the...
PJ Novak of Confluence, 510 Walnut, Kansas City, Missouri. Ron, the existing fence, which is the pool fence, as you can see, it's kind of a... Is there... Is there a...
It's on the site plan.
You can see the angle. I don't have a mouse, but you can see that kind of weird angle of the fence. That's the existing fence. There we go, three different sides. Then we've got the property line to the north and in our one zoning where a lot is 80 feet wide. 80 feet wide, no, 60 feet wide, I'm sorry. No, it's 80 feet wide in that area. It's a... The city has a setback of six foot from the property line to the shelter. We've gone well beyond that. We've got 11.67 foot from the property line. And then about midway between that is where the new fence is going to be. So the fence is not even on the property line, it's on the city's property, just under six foot from the northern property line. And then on the outside of that, there's a series of evergreen shrubs.
Back up for a minute, I still don't know where the... Could you put the pointer on where the existing fence is approximately? Oh, that's it? Oh, so it's way on the pool property. Okay, I'm getting it now, all right.
Do you know where the existing homeowner's fence is in relation to the property line?
No, it's... That is the fence line.
Oh, their fences on the property line?
Yeah.
Well, if their fence is on the property line...
There is no fence on the property line right now.
Oh.
Well, that's what... Okay.
No, we've got the existing fence, the angle portion that sits well back from that property. But what with the expansion, with the putting into the shelter and expanding that area for the pool deck and the pool green space, we're going up to our northern property line, but we've held back our... The city's new fence just under six foot from the property line.
But the adjacent neighbor is saying that she thought that was the property line, dotted line on the plan and that's where she has her landscaping? Is that true? I mean, is that...
There is some existing landscape there. I think it's unfortunate that the realtor didn't, you know, make that clear to the homeowner, but the survey says what the survey says and that's the legal property. I mean, I think we've been... I think we've made a good effort to try to... We've got a board-on-board fence, so it's not a solid, you won't see through it, but it's a pleasing fence. We've got a line of plant material going down that edge. The city is going to be taking care of all that, so I think it's... I think we've done a good job trying to respect that.
What type of material is that fence? Is it wood?
It's a cedar board-on-board, eight foot.
And I'll say right now, that's what the plan calls for. We have been talking with Kari and the neighbors there. They said that the chain link fence is something that they would like to have continued there. So the city's open, me, I'm open to having that chain link, the same chain link that we have there now because they would like an open view in there that they don't... Or at least Kari, I don't want to speak for her, but she expressed to me that she doesn't want the wooden fence there. So we're open to putting the same type of fence back, just in the new location.
That would be to match the existing pool fence, which is a PVC coated black.
I mean, is there any benefits to having the wood fence to at least mediate some sound?
I think the intention for the wood fence from the feedback from the meeting we had, that they wanted privacy, so the city decided to do the wood fence to give it more privacy and a buffer.
Right, that's what I would think that that would support that.
That's kind of what I heard too from her discussion was she liked the privacy and she felt like they were going to be right in her living room. And so with the chain link fence, it's kind of counterproductive about her concerns, isn't it?
Well, I would prefer the board-on-board from a privacy standpoint, but it's... That's the city and the city's decision on that.
I mean, maybe we can leave... Kari didn't speak to say what she would like there.
Will you come up to the microphone?
I've spoken to my neighbors and myself and my family. We don't want a Berlin Wall there. And that's what that fence would be. If you're going to do a board fence, it's bad enough that I'm, you know, losing all this yardage that I have really enjoyed. All my neighbors, I've spoken to four people and they really would prefer... We love being able that wide expanse, that vista through the fence. So that would be... If the fence has to be moved, then the four people that I've talked to in my block would prefer that it would be in keeping with the rest of the black metal fencing.
And do you know that there will be trees also planted there? I don't know how tall them are. I'm guessing six to eight feet tall? Once they grow. So it will be blocking the fence at some point. So I guess the wood would at least provide a little more privacy, but we're open to whatever you're interested in. I just want to make sure you know that the trees would also block it.
My neighbors that I've spoken to do not like the idea of having a, you know, kind of a continuous wooden fence that's going to be like the Berlin Wall, that we're going to have to count on the city maintaining and things like that. So that's what my chit chats with my neighbors tell me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, will the rest of the fencing continue to be the PVC coated chain link?
Yes.
So that would be in keeping with the rest of the pool, you know, so...
Correct.
It's probably less expensive too, so...
I'm assuming it is.
Oh, really? Okay. So PJ, I see there's no rainforest or rain garden there now. Is there a drainage problem at the end of that street that creates that new rain garden?
At the end of the street, there's a little... There's a cut in the curb that takes the water off Alhambra. It comes... It runs east nor south, kind of paralleling where the street was. And then it takes a turn and there's a concrete trough that brings it in to drain into the existing drainage system and the existing parking lot. What we're proposing is since we're removing some of that concrete that will capture that water, we'll put it into the rain garden and we'll have a slight overflow portion there. And so a small rain will just go into the rain garden, be absorbed in the ground. We'll have the proper plantings and soil mix in there. And in a bigger flow, it'll just come over the top and it'll go right into the parking lot.
Well, that seems like that should be a nice amenity for the neighbors around there. A little rain garden rather than a parking lot.
Is that eliminating the six parking spots that are on that north side?
No, no parking lot, no parking spaces would be...
All that green space right there is existing. We just have that culvert area that pushes the water. When the renovations happened in 2014 when they added the zero-depth area, that culvert wasn't there in the first weekend. It was open, we had a big rain. It wasn't here, but they had a big rain and all the mud from Alhambra pushed down into the pool. And so they retrofitted that culvert after the renovations. So that's why we were concerned about the water now going over anything there, so the rain garden was necessary. And it's a lot more pretty to see than a culvert.
Actually, at the end of Alhambra, there's going to be a little more green space now because we're removing a portion of the street that just to make sure the homeowner has their ability to back in and out. But that extra concrete at the end of the street is needed, we're turning it into green space.
Well, I think it looks like a nice plan. I think you guys have done a good job. I guess it's unfortunate the realtor misrepresented the property when it was purchased. But I don't think the city can forfeit that much land when they're trying to do a development.
Other comments? Do you want to just go down the line?
What's that?
Ron, do you have any comments? Do you have any comments?
Have you any comments? Sorry, I thought she was starting with you.
He spoke unless I go...
I agree.
I think it was evergreen.
My only comment.
No, with you, I mean, it's unfortunate. It's a homeowner, but at the same time, it's a survey point or the survey points. Development needs to be there. So it feels like they've done a nice plan and done what they can to provide the screening as best as possible. And it seems to be working the best it could.
I'm up. Quick clarification from me, I guess. So this is the site plan review where we verify it meets those sections of the code. Is... What's the next step of the approval of this to start construction?
Motion and approval.
That's it? So after we do this, there's... It's just like any other plan?
That's correct.
Let's go before city council.
It'll go before city council for...
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of with them. This is a little different than some of the approvals we do, given that, you know, there is an impact or at least more of an impact than usual to adjacent homeowner. But based on the scope of our review, I don't have any other concerns or comments.
Yeah, I mean, this is pretty ministerial for us. We're just confirming that this meets the city plan and I don't see any reason to object. Would encourage the city staff and designer to continue to work with the homeowners to mitigate any concerns they might have. Other than that, I think it should be approved.
I'm okay with the plan. The only thing I would ask is that city staff works with the homeowner or specifically on like the evergreen size for screening what that looks like. It doesn't call out like a size. Usually a lot of times on landscape plans, they'll call out like a gallon size or bagged and burlapped. Just work with the homeowner on what that screening looks like.
Okay. I appreciate everyone's comments. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion, we approve the plan for the improvements at the 6136 Mission Road Peterson Park.
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Next item of business is item B, site plan and deviation request for signage at 4210 Shawnee Mission Parkway, Fairway, Kansas, as submitted by Marty Palmer of Usign and Lighten behalf of Fairway, AALLC property owner. Basel, will you please provide your staff report?
Yes, I'll let my report stand as submitted. As far as staff recommendation, we're not supportive of the application just because of the code requirements. They're seeking a variance... A deviation. So that's the reason for the staff's recommendation. And I'm open to questions.
Are you all not in favor of this because of the number of the signs or the size of the signs?
The signs, especially the blade sign. Because the code really does... We don't have design criteria for blade sign.
Oh, into the parking garage?
In our zoning ordinance. So that's something that you guys have to approve and city council has to approve.
Are you okay with the building signs? Even though they're...
Again, the size, I mean, it's way over the limit, so again, that's your call.
It's a big building.
It's a big building. Have the sign people made any kind of comments that they need this size of a sign to accommodate this large of a building or...
That's the design. I did not... I think they're here to address any questions. I did not go through with a reduce it because they have that deviation that they can go for any size.
If they get the deviation.
If they get the deviation. Which was granted for the temporary signs for the development.
Yeah, but that wouldn't carry over to the...
But that's a temporary sign.
Well, the sign will be a lot farther away than that sign will be. Right. The sign's going to be on the building.
Well, yeah, it's going to be farther away. I mean, it doesn't look very...
I mean, it does look big, but in the scheme of the facade they're putting it on, I don't think it's going to be that drastic.
Well, it's not like one massive sign, it's just letters.
Yeah.
Although I don't understand the F and the F, but...
Well, is there any other questions for staff before we... Okay, would the applicant please come forward and say your name and address for the record so we can ask you a few questions?
Hello? My name is Jeffrey Isom. I'm the designer on the project. Also named it, done all the rest of the identity and branding. So a lot of research went into developing this mark. We researched Fairway in general, the history of it. So we wanted something that paid homage to the heritage of Fairway, the city, and just everything that's sort of transpired here since it was first recognized as a city with the golf courses specifically and how the name was sort of... Of Fairway was derived from that. So we wanted to do something that kind of had a kind of an instant tradition to it. And the two Fs stand for the Fieldston of Fairway. And Fieldston, as you all probably know, is subdivision within Fairway. So that was thought out, which this property kind of is right at the apex of the Fieldston subdivision. So that was intentional and also... Because there was a lot of names that were thrown out for this property. And so I was an advocate for doing something that really would be tasteful for the neighborhood, represented well. And that was also that line of thinking carried through with the identity itself. We wanted this to look like it's been around for a long time, that there's tradition to it, knowing that it was going to be in high visibility areas. And then as well as how it was lit on the building, this would be halo lit, so there would never be any direct projection of light. You see it from... With it being on the east and west sides of the building, which you guys commented on are pretty broad expanses. So these were all scaled sort of based on formulas so that the sign felt like adequate for the space, not oversized and something that wasn't undersized where it would kind of get lost or feel inadequate for the space. So we put a lot... I did all these drawings, did all the design for the interior signage as well. Like I said, named it, any of the marketing signage. And so it's something that was really kind of near and dear to me to make it tasteful for the neighborhood. I don't live too far from here and just wanted it to be something that represented the neighborhood itself and could even be kind of like a beacon in a way, coming from different directions with this, with like a soft halo glow, a little bit warmer light temperature. So it's something that would just kind of rest easy on the building. It wouldn't, you know, be kind of glaring at you. It's also on a part of the facade that's painted a little bit of like a medium gray. The finish on this sign in particular and the one on the east side of the building is like antique bronze. So again, trying to capture a feel that it's been there for a long time. It's an airy design. You know, it's not like a solid mass. So when you get into square footages of the design, with it being so airy, I mean, it's a little harder to quantify that overall square footage just because it's a lighter sort of impact on the building. So sorry for the long-winded.
Can I ask, on the elevation on the screen there on the left elevation, it's just a green blob. Is that still going to be the same FF or is that a different?
That was representing for the contractor to add blocking to the building just to reinforce the structure of the building with the sign attaching to it. So in case there was a lot of wind or anything like that. That's just showing the zone where the contractor was to add additional blocking.
Okay, so it'll be the same sign as on the other?
Correct, yeah. On the right is kind of a rendered example scaled to size.
Is there anywhere on the building that there will actually be a sign that says the Fieldston?
There will be. It'll be on the Fort Coucher on the stone. It's this one here. And that will be... It's sort of like a light box. There's an image in the bottom right corner of the drawing that shows kind of the styling and lighting reference. So by day, you see the lettering with sort of this milky glass looking material behind it. And then that box is what lights up at night. So it's just kind of like ambient backlighting, just to create basically a silhouette of the lettering. And again, the design of that was done, making it try to have a feel of like what maybe some of the signage would look for for the country clubs that were in the area in the origination of Fairway.
And that's over the entrance to the parking garage?
To the Fort Coucher, which is where like the cars pull up.
At the front, okay.
So it's the bump out structure that's stone and it's just above the archway.
Any other questions for that? Any other questions for the applicant?
So, for the blade sign, not seeing the support drawing for?
That, I think, is what's being considered, the blade sign. That, I believe, it's shown as being lit, there was some complications with getting power to this location, so it was no longer going to be lit. So it would look like that day and night. Obviously, in the evening, there'd be, the only thing that would be lighting is any kind of ambient light coming from within the building. So, and it's right at, kind of as you enter the leasing office, it's on the outer column. And the design there was so that you could see, depending on where you parked, you could see it if you were walking up the sidewalk towards the leasing entry, then you could also see it if you parked in the parking spaces, right in front of the leasing office. So, and we tried to scale it, so that it was recognizable once you get on the property, and not something that you would see, you know, quite as well from like this, from Shining Mission Parkway.
I think if you go back like three pages, there's another elevation that shows. That one, yep, sorry. Yes, that one. So which sign does that go to?
That's the two Fs, the halo lit, building mounted sign, which matches the same size and design as on the other side of the building, on the east side of the building. And that section's painted the kind of medium gray as well.
If you go to the last page of the report, the F signs are indicated where it's located. So it's one on the east, one on the west.
We did a lot of drive-by studies of this. We first started designing the signs towards the end of last summer. So trees were in bloom, you know, you could have, you could kind of see what the sightlines would be then. We also monitored it when there wasn't any leaves. And these two locations gave the best visibility when you're heading either direction on Shining Mission Parkway. So again, that you can see it from a far distance, and then also you see quite a bit of the building as well. So that's also what kind of helped play into the measurements and getting the scale. Again, so that it would be something that, if you weren't looking up there, you wouldn't notice it. It's not like something you'd see out of the corner of your eye if it was facelit. But it's something that, if you would look up at the building, you know, that's when you would take notice of it. And the light temperature is a little bit warmer of a light temperature, which again, you know, it's not gonna be this kind of like white or blue light, it's gonna be in harmony with the rest of the building.
So you, I guess, at five thousand Kelvin then, for your light temperature?
Not quite that, it's about twenty-seven hundred, I believe, or three thousand?
Soft white.
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Oh, it says five thousand.
Yeah, if you look at the first drawing. Right there at the top, oh, maybe that one, top right?
Five thousand K.
Five thousand would be really white.
Yeah, that would be. I think that was a typo on the sheet, yes, it's three thousand. I can confirm that from. I can verify that three thousand's accurate, that's a typo.
On the last sheet with elevations, second to the last page of the whole set, in the bottom left-hand corner, there's a, it says, keep going. There, there. The bottom left-hand corner says tenant, is that gonna be a sign, or is that just some indication of something?
That will be a separate application when the tenant comes in. So that's not part of this. I mean, they're putting it there, but it's gonna be a separate application for approval.
So that would be like a retail?
For the retail.
But we still have to approve that.
Yeah.
That's the next item of business today, sort of, right?
Yeah, so until we know who the tenant and what sign they want, we can't dictate, okay, we can-
I thought that'd be a little generic, just to have this tenant.
If you look over to the right, this was just kind of the architect had for placeholders. They had one to just at leasing really big, just above and to the right of where we placed our blade sign. And we offered our services too, to help with whatever tenant moves in, to make sure that their signage is in harmony with the rest of the building. We want it to feel like it's part of the building and not something that's-
Yeah, you'd hope they would come up with the same style of letter and maybe colors.
Yeah, I mean, you never know, and that's why we wanted to be in that conversation.
Pink neon or something would not go good with yours.
Well, we would have something to say about that.
Oh, I like it.
And this particular developer, I've personally worked with for about twelve years, and they have great taste, and they care about things like that, so I know that they would go to bat for that as well.
Any other question?
How do you feel about that, the size of that Fieldston sign above the portico? You feel it needs to be that big, I mean?
I do, because the next element within that that comes into question is the letter height. And so, when it's scaled at that particular size, there's studies you do for like viewing distance from different distances, what letter height would be readable. So we do want this for someone that's passing by, because it doesn't say Fieldston anywhere else on the building. So as you're passing by, we do want someone to notice that it does say the Fieldston, but not so large that it's distracting or takes away from the architecture of the building. So any, anytime you scale that down, it proportionally scales down the lettering as well. And the way that we have it scaled too, is that kind of a balance with the window section that's above it, and just that available space. So if it gets much smaller, it comes into kind of the same scenario that we were considering with the building mounted sign, that we didn't want it to feel undersized, and any bigger would feel oversized. So again, it was just kind of doing some scale exercises and sort of finding that Goldilocks, so to speak, size for that particular space.
I had a quick question for you. On the west elevation, that's an adjacent partial, I believe, they've got for future, correct?
That's correct.
Is there, is there any height restrictions on that partial, or is it single story, or, I guess, what I'm asking is, was there any sightline studies considered that there will be a future building there in consideration of your sign location and height?
It is, yeah, and they couldn't answer what's gonna be there. They do know that that property is available, and it could be, they can't say for sure what it would be. So they do know that at some point, that sightline could be obstructed if the building's tall enough to do so. There's still probably enough gap between the property line and the Fieldston with whatever else would be placed there that you may not see it from as far west as you would now, but as you get closer to the property, you would just be able to see it then.
Okay.
And there's trees and everything, I mean, so it's, again, it's sort of strategically placed to not, you know, be glaring, but be noticeable.
Sure, appreciate that. And then, the other quick question I had for you is, on this large sign, just so I understand, this is just the letters, so there's no like, that like clear backing or anything, this just represents the letters?
Correct, yeah, so it's beveled aluminum, it's gonna be painted antique bronze, or, yeah, antique bronze, and it's actually beveled, the form itself is beveled like that.
Okay.
But it's very airy, all the lighting will be backlit, and there'll be a diffuser on the back of that that makes that light even, so it won't be like hot spots on the stucco behind it.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion of putting any, putting any signs out at the street?
Like a monument sign?
Well, no, not a monument sign, don't even talk about that, but-
Yeah.
But I mean, like, you know, when you're driving by there fifty-five or sixty miles an hour, and you see that sign, you're gonna be too late, because there only gonna be one.
Or on, you'll get a ticket.
Well, hey, a lot of people do, I see it every day. I'm just telling you, I drive thirty-five, and people are going by me like I'm not even in the car, you know?
Yeah, I've experienced that.
But I thought, you know, that it seems like they might wanna, you know, because, I mean, I've lived here for a long time, and it's still kind of awkward when you're coming, and if you wanna go into the bank, you've gotta be in the right lane at the right time.
Gotta be ready.
It'll be the same with this place.
There will be an additional, they're creating a new entry there. I don't know what kind of signs they're gonna have. I know that's pulling out a fifty-foot now and turning left out of there is kind of a tricky turn, and I know-
We kind of felt like it should be a, well, a left, a left turn, I guess you could maybe make, but it's, would be better if they did, but-
So again, that's, so coming from the west, you know, having some, some kind of signage there that's visible can kind of be that first visual, visible cue of the building. If someone's not using GPS or something like that, I think the structure itself, just being so uniform for the area, would just kind of catch your eye anyway. There was never any discussion about having maybe like a pedestal sort of directional sign at that entry. That's something that could be considered, but I think all along, we're just trying to kind of keep the signs to a minimum, and just try to let the property kind of speak for itself and catch your attention.
So there's not a plan to come in with like a wayfinding signage package later or anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other further comments? Questions? Thank you. Discussion?
I had a quick question for staff. Does, I drove this, I think, this weekend, and noticed a couple other buildings in the business park had signs on them. Are all those businesses subject to the same signage, I guess jurisdiction that we're talking about now, for size and such? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is the medical, is the KU building, is that part of Fairway?
No.
All right.
We don't regulate that.
Yeah.
That's the state owned.
Any other questions or discussion?
I appreciate the designer's explanation of the dimensions and the way that, because when I first looked at this, I thought it's a little bit too big, but the way he explained it, the way it kind of sits with the elevation, like if you shrink it, it's just gonna get lost, so I understand the need to have a larger footprint.
Yeah, and I think if you're standing next to those buildings, like I've noticed they are a lot bigger than a lot of the other buildings around Fairway, so it'll make a difference. Any other discussion, or does someone want to make a motion?
I have a quick question. Being that the plans do show that five thousand for the white LEDs, and the applicant stated it should be three thousand, should that correction be part of the motion that they're approving?
So it depends if the planning commission would like it to come back to them before, or once the correction is made. If that is the desire, then the planning commission would need to continue it, ask for the corrections, and then the applicant would come back with those corrections, or the planning commission can condition approval, presumably approval on changes for the city council to review.
So we could include that in our motion, and then it could move to?
Yeah, or is it possible, like we've had with others, for staff to confirm that with a revision that's turned in that shows the three thousand? Without it having to come back to planning commission to confirm that says three thousand, would they be able to say staff can confirm that?
Oh, yes, the planning commission can request that that is confirmed, that the plans are updated, and that updated plans be provided to council.
Okay.
And they would need to include that in their motion.
So city council has to approve this as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think they, don't they approve everything we do?
I guess.
We're not the last word on anything.
Which is fine with me.
The next city council is May twelfth, so I'm assuming the applicant can make that change just before that they-
Yes.
Yeah.
They could scribble it out and add the three.
All right, would someone like to make a motion and include that requirement?
Real quick too, I think the motion should also clarify that we're approving, I believe it's the two large signs, the leasing sign and the Fieldston sign, the other two signs, tenant, and the leasing sign are not a part of this approval, even though they're shown on the elevation.
So with the city, I mean, what we'd like to see is, part of the deviation is approval of the blade sign. Then, the Fieldston sign is more than one foot away from the wall, so we have that deviation, and then the size and the number of signs.
Yeah, so here, it lists the three items that we're discussing and approving. I think the tenant and lease sign was actually a list shown on the original plan that we approved a few years ago with elevations.
That's, that's correct, but no matter what, that they have to come with this.
Right, I know, I'm just clarifying that we've already seen that, so. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve as the, for the three conditions submitted by the applicant on condition that they clarify the temperature as being three thousand Kelvin as opposed to five thousand Kelvin consistently.
Do we need to say we're approving the deviation? Does it matter?
Uh, yes, I would, yeah, the one in, or the one foot deviation from the wall sign, yeah.
And the proposed deviation or something like that?
Okay, and with my motion also that we approve the deviation of the wall sign.
Sorry, second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, next item of business is item C. Before I jump into this, I know the applicant has to resubmit or add more information. So are we doing a public hearing for this?
No, our recommendation is, they did not submit the notices in time, so.
Okay, so here, I'll, let me open up the business, and then we'll talk about it, I guess, and then we won't, yeah, okay. Sorry.
They didn't, they didn't publish anything so that people would know about a public meeting.
The city did. So this is the item C, public hearing discussion for rezoning, updating B three P development plan, and request special use permit for forty-one hundred, forty-two ten Shining Mission Parkway, Fairway, Kansas, as submitted by Brian Douglas of M R E M Fairway Property Retail LLC. Okay, so, we don't have all the information submitted, or the public hearing has been noticed, so therefore, we cannot have a public hearing.
Correct, correct. This application was submitted, the city did our required publications by the deadlines for this meeting. After that is when the applicant disclosed they had not completed the mailings that they were required to do. So the city had already published this notice for the meeting, that's why it is on the agenda for this evening. So at this point, planning commission would be able to continue it to the March nineteenth, so the public who received any letters have that opportunity.
Yes. Okay.
Will you have to republish it?
No, that's why we're doing the continuation tonight.
So is there any questions or discussion before we make a motion to continue?
And just to clarify, you can open it for public testimony and public hearing if there is any to be had, and the commission can discuss any of the contents if they want, but it will ultimately need to be continued.
Does everyone understand what we're gonna be discussing at the next meeting? Basel, you want to just give a brief overview for the people that have questions?
So basically, what they got approved is for specific occupancy. So they have a couple of tenants that did not meet their original development or use. And that's what they're doing the change for, to include some of the usage or tenant usage in the building.
So we, we won't know exactly who the tenants are. We'll just know the expanded category?
That's correct. So you, you'll see that in the development plan, they have the table and what the categories are. So it's grocery, neighborhood, retail, restaurant, bar, general, personal services, indoor recreation, neighborhood professional service office, and indoor recreation with special use permit. And I think the tenant falls under that last one.
So, so.
The proposed tenant.
Those would all be tenant functions? That wouldn't be part of the facility? I mean, they wouldn't be having exercises in some of the multipurpose rooms or, or in the pool? I mean, is that?
No, it's not for just that development. It's for the retail too, next to Starbucks. They have three tenants there and that tenant that you commented about the sign. So these are the three tenants that they want to fill with tenants.
So are, this is probably a question for legal. Are we allowed, once we are considering a category, are we allowed to put exceptions on that category? So for example, they say personal services, we say, okay, but no massage parlor or something. I mean, like, we don't really know what that means. It's such a broad category. Can, can we put some strictures on that?
Yes, I will also, so this is under BP three, B three P zoning. And so that's going to be planned zoning. You guys can put kind of restrictions for the use as the planning commission deems fit. I will note kind of to your point about massage parlors and things like that, the landing question is subject to a development agreement. And a lot of those kind of uses are prohibited under that development agreement. And all of these uses that are requested by the developer are uses that under the use table per the code are permitted within the BP three zoning district. So they are just kind of seeking to establish what is already allowed under the code as applied to their specific development plan.
Thank you.
It just so happened on the original development plan in those tenant areas, they put specific labels like restaurant, which mean the only thing that was going to be allowed to go in there was a restaurant. So they're just trying to open it up a little bit more to find tenants for that location.
Is there, you mentioned there's a table with all these listed. Is it in this packet or is it?
Yeah, I think it's on page forty of forty-one, bottom right-hand corner. This shows section B, B three P, section fifteen, two sixty-four, use table.
What page are you?
On the PDF, page forty of forty-one.
Old school over here.
The second to last page is the, there's only two pages, so it's the first one in the packet. Which is AS one hundred sheet.
On this development plan that's out there.
So Boswell, explain that again. You said when they submitted the original plan, it showed like specific callouts for those tenant spaces?
So that's what was approved as a development plan. Well, now, I mean, they're seeking tenants and we're saying, well, you can't. It was designed as a restaurant. So now they want to.
But it's a technicality because under the code for B three P, these are, these uses are allowed, essentially what you're saying.
Well, it's only been approved for B three, right? And we're changing it? To B three P?
Well, that's a, their zoning, are you talking about the report itself?
I can clarify. So they're already zoned the B three P. The way that we have to change the uses is through a rezoning application. And so the zoning of the district will not change. It will remain that B three, but it's going to change the uses that are permitted. So in the initial development plan that was approved, they listed certain uses for certain spaces. And whenever they're seeking tenants, they're saying, we want to put this tenant here. And we're saying, you can't because it says that it's supposed to be a restaurant. So they're seeking to change the permitted uses under all of the retail spaces to allow any of the uses that are set forth in this use table. So that way they don't have to come back every time and say, hey, we're going to put this here.
So they just want flexibilities where they can put those within the development then?
Yes. And, and to clarify Ben, your question, the use table does put permitted uses for the BP three zoning. But it's when you're doing a planned development, the commission has the authority to kind of tailor those down to what they want to be permitted. And only what's submitted in the development plan is a permitted use.
Well, because I can see this general personal services, that's kind of a vague, general. I mean, that could cover a nail salon. That's a personal service or massage parlor.
Correct, subject to the development agreement.
How do we specify that? Because I mean, if it's a spa, that may be acceptable, but some may argue that a massage parlor is not acceptable. How do we actually define the differences?
I think that's something that legal in combination with staff and the developer can kind of think about and come back with a recommendation for you guys.
Okay, I think that might be worth, based on where they might be headed, I think it'd be good to know that.
Even indoor recreation, that could take a wide variation too.
And the code, yeah, the code does define what indoor recreation and what general personal services kind of means. And so that would be a place to potentially start as well. And we can update, if it's helpful, we can update the staff report to include what all of those definitions are for the proposed uses.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Does, depending on these uses, is there, does the city have certain regulations on parking stall counts based on those uses? Or is BP three all just, I guess, will there be another chance to look at this, a bite at the apple, to understand what's going in there? Does that make sense with parking?
Well, as far as parking, it's already, yeah, I mean, it's determined whatever the occupancy is for that tenant. So you can't put a, something that's gonna have not enough parking. But they can always use, you can always use an exception to, to use, say, well, there is street parking available. So you can always come back with that required recommendation. But in general, that parking spaces you have is for a specific number of occupancy.
Well, I could see if it became like a bridge parlor or something like that, where people, there'd be a large group of people in a fairly small area. They could overload the parking for a, a general kind of situation.
I mean, I think they have tenants in mind already that are prepared. Like when they come before us, they can share with us their plans, I would hope, right?
Well, right, but tenants come and go too.
Well.
But I mean, we're not approving.
I'm not sure, like, I mean, you can ask them in next meeting, but I, I mean, we can't, I don't know if we can tell you who's going to be the tenant. I mean, we know.
We've had some general uses identified, but we haven't had any specific tenants identified.
Right, but I mean, here we are saying that these are the different ones that we're going to approve. I think we're going to have to narrow it down somehow, otherwise we're, we wouldn't be calling them.
But I think there are regulations where there are some uses that are not allowed in general in our zoning ordinance. So just like a massage parlor, or I think it's already says it's not allowed in the city. So that's already established.
I believe it would be allowed, but there's regulations as for it, yes.
And then there's that last one with special use permit. So they, if they want to use that category, then they have to apply for a special use permit and come in front of planning commission.
Okay, and then the last thing, just to clarify, so I'm straight on this too. This is, this rezoning is specific to the pad site and the existing Starbucks building that's been previously constructed, correct? Or is it also applicable?
So it's for the three pads because that's the district.
Okay.
The E three P includes the pad side, the development, which has that one tenant space.
Okay.
And the building, the three tenants, the Starbucks plus the two.
Other ten, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the retail and the development plus that pad side.
All right, any other questions or do we want to make a motion to continue?
I'd make a motion that we continue this until they met the requirements to the next meeting.
Our second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next item of business is item four. Set the next meeting date for May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there, are there applications besides this one?
Yes, we do have one new single family. Two other applicants missed the deadline, so.
So usually no one makes the deadline for May. That's a disappointment.
That's a short deadline. Are they going to have time to even mail the stuff out?
All right, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.